This is a continued public hearing on the comprehensive permit application for 445 Harvard Street. It is a 40B project and this is our fourth hearing. My name is Johanna Schneider. I sit as chair on this panel. I am joined by my esteemed colleagues Jessie Geller and Lark Palermo. Want to take a bow, anybody? Wave, whatever. Tonight, we have just a few items on our agenda. We may start off, Polly, if you want to give some sort of staff report. We'll start with a staff report. Then, the focus of tonight's meeting is going to be environmental issues at the site. We will hear from our environmental peer reviewer. We will hear a response from the development team. We will hear an update as to how things are coming in terms of design staff meetings with the development team. And we will also have an opportunity for public comment on the things that we discuss here tonight. So, we will be asking that comments be limited to the matters on tonight's agenda, which, as I said, is primarily the environmental issues, if any, at the site. And then that will be it. And then we will be continuing the hearing until Wednesday, September 25th at 7:00 PM. So, those are the topics we will be covering. Polly, do you want to-
Yes, I have a few comments. I'm Polly Selko, Assistant Director of Regulatory Planning. I just want the board to know that the planning department staff, design review consultant Cliff Bomer, and the development team for this project did meet to discuss design issues. And I believe they're planning several very significant revisions to how the building is going to look and the sighting of the building. So, you'll probably hear about that in September. As well, in September, you'll hear about, from the traffic and parking consultant. We had thought about doing it tonight, but there were still some issues that were outstanding. And we thought it would be better to have that resolved before they came before you. So, as you said, tonight, you'll be hearing from Dan LaFrance from Fuss and O'Neil. And he is our peer reviewer who did the environmental consultant report.
And with that as an introduction, Dan, do you want to come up and give us your comments, please?
Yeah, I can do that if you want, yeah.
Just like to say, you know, my peer review is somewhat dated in that there have been some updates to the plans. Lauren represents the applicant's team and has, you know, some comments about how they've incorporated some of our original plan. If it makes sense, she can present the updated plan information and then I can comment on that.
Have you had the opportunity to review the updated plan? I noticed in the written materials that we received, there seemed to be, there was, there were your comments, which I believe were done in April. And then there was an update letter from the developer's environmental consultant on July 16th. Do you have comments that have been updated based on that July 16th letter or new plans that have been prepared?
I just saw that letter tonight first then.
I think it would be helpful to hear from the peer reviewer, don't you?
Yeah, yeah. So, I think, I think what we would like to do is to proceed in the order that I outlined, which is to hear the peer review comments first. To the extent that you are aware of changes in the project that might have some bearing on what you are telling us, feel free to incorporate them. And then we can hear a response from the developer's environmental consultant. And then if there is anything that you want to add after she's made her presentation, we'll have you back up.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so-
Please provide your name for the record.
So, Dan LaFrance, Fuss and O'Neil. And as you had stated, we prepared our initial review back in April. At the time, the design contemplated us an underground parking garage extending roughly 20 feet below grade. My understanding is that that has changed rather significantly here. You know, an updated presentation on that as we go. But basically, you know, our comments are outlined in this letter, but effectively, the concerns that we have, first and foremost, you know, the site is an old gas station. There are still underground fuel oil, or underground fuel tanks out here, gasoline products primarily. There is a process for removing those. There's a possibility that upon removal of those tanks, you'll identify leak and have to perform an environmental cleanup. To the extent that, you know, those tanks are normally set three feet below ground surface, the bottom of those tanks 10, 12 feet. To dig a parking garage through the bottom of that, you may be putting the bottom of your floor slab in contact with contaminated soil. There were some concerns that we had there. I understand that the applicant has changed the design fairly significantly to work around that. There are two existing environmental case files that date back to about 2000, 2001 out here. They resulted from some improvements that were done at the gas station at that time. And basically, when they were closed out, they used sort of an averaging approach to say, you know, this is the overall data set that documents that the site poses no significant risk under the site conditions. But within that data set, there are highs and lows. And what that means when you're excavating and performing soil management work on the site is that you have to be prepared for those highs to be contaminated material that has to be excavated, managed, follow a process under Massachusetts contingency plan for tracking disposal, et cetera. And, you know, we basically recommended that, you know, with those two issues particularly in mind, that the applicant retain an LSP to, you know, develop a soil management plan for how construction soil management would happen. The other couple of kind of main points that we've raised related to, again, with the underground parking garage, the idea that the depth of groundwater out here is, you know, in the 20s feet. It varies significantly across the site because of interactions with bedrock, which is also fairly shallow out here as well. And so, if the idea was to dig, you know, basically property line to property line down to a significant depth, there might be some interactions with groundwater that, again, has these gasoline contaminants in it. And, you know, what is going to happen to that water? How is that going to be treated and disposed? My understanding is that, at this point, the parking configuration has changed from an underground garage to a shallow pit with a shuffling system that will be a maximum depth of about eight feet below the ground. And then the building will be slab on grade so that there won't be any subsurface, any significant subsurface work. There will, there would still be some, you know, footings, frost walls, et cetera, for the building foundation. But they're not going to go down 20, 25 feet and interact with water, interact with rock, require large-scale excavation. You know, and lastly, one of our original comments was that to perform that level of excavation, you're talking about, you know, in excess of 4,000 cubic yards of material coming off of the site. And, you know, generally, you can fit 25, 30 yards of material into a truck. You're talking about, you know, in excess of 100 truckloads of material leaving the site, potentially contaminated material. How is that going to be handled and, you know, transported off-site? At one of the other 40Bs in town, one of the conditions that we had recommended under those kind of circumstances was there wasn't going to be room to stockpile material on-site and store it. And with, you know, gasoline remnants in the soil that are going to be an odor issue that are going to be kind of readily identified by the neighbors, that that material should be live loaded and taken off-site. There seems as though there would be room at this site, based on the scaled-down version of excavation, that there might be room to stage that material. But, again, there are requirements in the regulations as far as how to handle that material while it's on-site, cover the piles, maintain wind and erosion controls, et cetera, that would need to be considered in order to make that work. So, I believe that in general was the overall summary of my set of comments. Basically recommending that the applicant, you know, be prepared for closing underground storage tanks, potentially having to address environmental contaminants that may be present in the environment, both as a result of that and as a result of the legacy of the site. And that they develop an appropriate plan to address that. And the one final point that I'll bring up is that, you know, we raised the issue of excavation support and, you know, concerns for site safety. Obviously, going from a 20-foot-deep hole to a frost wall at the property line reduces a lot of the concern dramatically. But digging in close proximity to the property line, it's still a thing to keep in mind that there are excavation support requirements. There are ocean issues that come up with, you know, digging down to put in these pits, to put in these smaller parking structures as well.
Do you have any concerns, given the soil conditions and contamination conditions that you described, do you have any concerns about environmental impact once the property is developed? Or are your concerns primarily, or maybe even exclusively, about construction period management of contaminated soils?
Well, so generally, the concern post-development would be, are you going to create any conditions that would exacerbate an existing release? And so, for example, if you took a site that, you know, for this site, for example, it's effectively 100% courteous at this point. If you then took down all the buildings, took out all of the pavement, and created an area where groundwater recharge is going to happen, now you may have, the contaminants that are in groundwater may have the potential to migrate in other directions. With the site development being as extensive as it is, precondition to postcondition is going to be roughly the same. And so, my concerns are primarily related to the construction phase. And, you know, realistically, once there's a new building over top of any of this material, the exposure is mostly minimized except in the instance of something like vapor intrusion, which, you know, generally with the levels that have been identified to date, would not be a significant concern. The contaminants are low enough levels and far enough away. Concern would be if the fuel tanks are removed, having to remove enough of the contaminated soil to prevent any issues, basically, in areas where there's ground floor commercial space, where there's an enclosed structure, or over an elevator pit or something like that, where there might be a pathway for vapors to move up within the building. And as long as those issues are addressed appropriately and closed out appropriately, the regulatory closure endpoint is designed to be protective against those kind of long-term issues.
He just answered the part I was going to ask. It's all subject to state regulatory schemes.
I actually do have a question.
Sure.
The property across the street that is a 40B project in construction now-
455 or the-
Yeah.
455.
We had extensive discussions around that project. And the final conclusion was that it would be best practices to install a vapor barrier. And it wasn't necessarily associated with the petroleum contamination of the site on this side of the street, but there had been some potential migration of contamination from the dry cleaners, which is located-
Yes, and that was further down the block the other way, I guess.
A little, a little down the block the other way. And the developer in that case agreed that the best practice would be to install a vapor barrier because the HVAC system could potentially draw up some of the fumes-
Yep.
-that might be there. Would you say that would be true in this case, that it would be the best practice to install a vapor barrier?
Yes, and if I remember those proceedings correctly, I was in the peanut gallery for that one. My boss gave that presentation on the environmental conditions. The vapor barrier that was installed there was not an environmental vapor barrier per se. It was a building code requirement to install a vapor barrier somewhat regardless.
I see.
But they agreed to make it a little bit more robust.
Yes.
The, the dry cleaner in question on the scale of this plant here would be off, off the map to the left. It's the next property over. So, you're putting a little bit more distance between that former site, that former dry cleaner, and this particular site. But the point is still a valid one, that, you know, vapor mitigation may be a wise decision. But as part of that discussion, if I remember it correctly, the applicant agreed to do that in lieu of additional testing to verify whether or not vapors would actually be an issue. There was, they didn't want to do any further testing. They just wanted to get straight ahead to building. With the underground storage tanks here still in place, there is effectively a requirement under the building code and under the cleanup regulations and the tank code to perform some additional assessment when those tanks come out of the ground. So, it's sort of already required to do some additional evaluation for those kind of chemicals, where the tanks had long since been removed next door at that former gas station. And so, they weren't required to necessarily do that. And they could skip straight to construction, you know, from a regulatory perspective, whether that was a good idea or not. And basically, what we said is if you're not going to test, you should do that additional-
Yeah, I think, I think frankly, this town deserves best practices, not necessarily limited to regulatory compliance. And that's why I'm asking the question. If, if best practices would be to install a vapor barrier under these circumstances, then I for one would want to know that. And, you know, I think there's legitimate concern in the neighborhood about this site in particular. And so, disturbing, I would assume disturbing the soils where the tanks are located in and of itself could potentially raise some issues.
Your concern is valid, but that being said, you know, I would argue that the, the engineering controls are always the measure of less resort. You know, it may be best practice in terms of, you know, it will ultimately solve the problem, but vapor barriers have a finite life to them. I would rather rely on the science of evaluating and confirming that there isn't actually an issue in the first place, rather than trying to install a barrier to it.
Yeah, no, 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 I wasn't arguing we wouldn't confirm. I'm saying in addition, it's, it may be belts and suspenders, but it might be advisable.
I will let the applicant address that point. Lauren Spurren does quite a bit of work on vapor intrusion. And she is, you know, well-qualified to answer that particular concern.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi, I'm Lauren Kennesney. I'm a licensed site professional at Cooperstown Environmental. I've had that license, it's also called LSP, for over five years now. And I've been in the environmental consulting field for over 15 years. I have a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering from Northeastern University. And I'm also a board member of the LSP Association, which is the professional organization for LSPs and other environmental professionals cleaning up oil and chemical spills in Massachusetts. And I'm obviously here today to respond to the environmental technical review for 455 Harvard Street. Site plan up here is the existing conditions plan of the current gas station. Dan already gave you a lot of the background of the site, but just to point out a few things. This oil gas station and automobile service facility, this is the 1940s. There were historic releases on the property that were closed out in 2001 and 2002. The contaminant concentrations identified associated with these releases were so low that they didn't need to do any remediation to achieve a condition of no significant risk to close out these releases. And there are also multiple other gas stations and former gas stations in the area, which there was some concern about potential migration from these other properties that might have releases onto this property in the future. So, although this property is a gas station, with historic releases, this property is still a good candidate for redevelopment. It just means that it's going to require some extra planning and awareness to make sure things are done correctly and there are no unexpected surprises or delays or hazards that, that are addressed along the way. In most cases, redevelopment of these properties, these former industrial and commercial properties with oil storage or other companies, they actually end up making the site safer in the long run because additional remediation is done that wouldn't have otherwise been conducted. And as example, like we talked about that other property, the 455 Harvard Street, that was Harvard Street property, that was also a former gas station. And that's got a similar four-story residential building with first floor retail currently being developed at that property. So, this really is kind of a common thing. And a lot of my experience in recent years has been dealing with similar properties, commercial properties being redeveloped into mixed-use residential or hotel uses. So, here is the new proposed plan. The revised comprehensive permit application was submitted in April to the building department. And it addressed many of the concerns that Dan spoke about before. And I'll kind of go through a little bit in detail of how we're going to address these concerns throughout the project. Go back to the original plan. Up on the left-hand corner of the property there, you can see that kind of L shape. That's where the three tanks are still on-site. There's three 12,000-gallon underground storage tanks for gasoline. And those are the only three tanks that are still out there. These tanks, the associated piping, and the pump islands will be removed in accordance with the Department of Environmental Protection UST Closure Assessment Manual in 310 CMR 80.43, which is the requirements for the UST removal and permanent closure in place. The tank removal will be the first phase of construction sequence. Assessment conducted in that tank area back in 2001, it indicated that there was no ongoing releases from those USTs. I mean, it was limited data, but from what we saw, we didn't see, there were no concerns about leaking tanks. And since that time, those tanks have been, had tank type testing conducted annually, which also indicates that it's not likely these tanks have leaked. So, with the evidence that we have on hand, we're not really expecting to encounter much contaminated material when these tanks are removed and closed out. But if any reportable conditions are identified at that time, the assessment or remediation will be conducted in accordance with the Massachusetts contingency plan, or the MCP, which is the regulations that govern the cleanup of oil and chemical spills in Massachusetts. So, Dan also talked about the management of contaminated soil at the property. This kind of shows the excavation plan for the proposed development. The areas in orange, those are the footings and the stairwells. And that excavation in those areas is going to be down to about five feet. And those red areas are the, the parking pits. And excavation in those areas is going to be down to about eight feet below grade. Previously, the, the prior plan had a subsurface garage, which had excavation to maybe about 19 feet. So, that plan, the original plan, had about 4,500 cubic yards of soil that needed to be removed. And this new plan has reduced that to 930 cubic yards of soil. So, to put that in perspective, the truckloads with the original plan would have been about 150 to 180 truckloads of soil. And this new plan, it's more like 30 to 40 truckloads. So, that will significantly decrease the construction phase traffic associated with the project. So, the soil will be characterized institute prior to construction to allow for soils to be direct loaded and to minimize stockpiling at the site. At least one sample will be collected for every 500 cubic yards of soil. If any remediation wastes is identified by the soil characterization, it will be managed under the MCP. So, Dan talked about some of the historic releases and how they average it out. There was one sample that had higher lead and arsenic levels, kind of near where that blue dot is on there in the middle. And you can see that's in a location that's not going to be disturbed by, by excavation. And that's, it's actually located nine feet below surface. And we think that's probably a maximum concentration because it was located directly beneath the former oil-water separator that was removed. So, it won't be disturbed during excavation. And for future occupants, they don't have access to it because it'll be beneath the floor and beneath, and nine feet below the floor. Dan talked a little bit about the construction safety concerns. And the previous plan included excavation to 19 feet, close to the property line. Here, we're mostly at five feet, close to the property line. So, there's much less concern about the body parcels and utilities. But just, just as a safety measure, the applicant's going to provide a strategy to ensure that the adjacent properties and utilities will be adequately protected during construction. And that's going to be submitted as part of the OLP permit. Bedrock out here has been encountered as shallow as 20 feet. So, when excavation was planned to about 19 feet, there was a concern that we might encounter bedrock. But now that we're only going to eight feet, that's no longer a concern. Similarly, groundwater is as shallow as 18 feet out here. So, there was potential dewatering needed when excavation was down to 19 feet. But now at eight, eight feet, we're going to be significantly above the water table. So, that eliminates that, that issue. Dan was talking about potential vapor migration. And in the previous design, the floor was about, just a few feet above the groundwater table. And if there's any contamination in the groundwater table, that has the potential to migrate into the building. And now, the slab in the occupied space will be about 18 feet above the groundwater table. So, even if there were any contamination in that, MASTD P says that groundwater greater than 15 feet is not considered a potential source of indoor air via groundwater, via vapor migration. So, that's no longer really an issue out here. The groundwater data that was collected back in 2001 all indicated that even, that the concentrations were below the indoor air concern levels, even if the water had been shallower. So, in summary, 45 Harvard LLC has made changes to the design to decrease the environmental concerns associated with the project based on the, the- based on the environmental, sorry, I was just remembering another point that I wanted to talk about for the vapor migration. Forgot to mention the soil. There's no significant sources of volatile compounds have been, no, no significant sources of volatile compounds have been identified in the soil at the site. So, there's really no concern at this point in time that we know of for any vapor migration to happen from the soil as well. So, at this point, we don't have a vapor barrier system. We don't think it's necessary. And we don't have it included in the plan. But we'll reconsider that if soil characterization or tank closure assessment identify volatile compounds in the soil. And I mean, it sounds like the board is considering wanting a vapor barrier. So, we can have discussions about that if that's something that they feel is necessary. If that's something that they feel is necessary, based on the existing data, I don't feel that that's necessary at this time. Like I said, we're collecting additional data and if any of that indicates otherwise, it will be reconsidered. So in summary, the tanks, associated piping and the pump islands will be removed in accordance with the applicable regulations. And if any reportable conditions are identified, assessment or remediation will be conducted in accordance with the MCP. Approximately 930 cubic yards of soil will still need to be removed from the site. The soil will be pre-characterized institute prior to construction. If any remediation waste is identified by the soil characterization, it will be managed under the MCP. Any remaining residually impacted soil or groundwater will be located beneath the building or sidewalk and will not be accessible to future occupants of the site. And no vapor barrier system is deemed necessary at this time, but will be reconsidered if soil characterization, tank closure assessment identify volatile compounds in the soil.
Do I have a question?
I have questions. Do you have, go ahead.
I have questions, but you can go first. You're the chair. You may ask my question.
I, I might, but you could also ask mine. So I understand that there's a lot of information relating to the prior RTNs, which it sounds like we're focused primarily on the area around the tanks.
So they did a phase, what's called a Phase One Environmental Site Assessment of the whole property and the only area that they identified as an issue is they had like a low level of MTV, methyl turpene, ethyl at the 22 feet. And that was the only compound they detected above reportable conditions at that time. And then they went back and removed an oil-water separator about a few months later and had one other hit quite below the oil-water separator of some higher metals and stuff.
Okay.
But it was very limited.
Right. So those, if I understood what you were saying or what Dan was saying, those assessments and that remediation was done in the 2000, 2001 timeframe. Now, obviously, the site has been operating as a service station continuously, you know, since that time as well. Have there been other Phase Ones, Phase Twos performed at the site since then that would capture any spills, anything else that may have happened on the site, you know, maybe independent of what was going on with the USTs and the oil-water separator? But I mean, you know, I take my car there for service, right? So I mean, are we talking about releases of waste oil? Are we talking about hydraulic oil? How do we know whether or not those compounds are also present in the soil because of operations subsequent to the closure of those two RTNs?
So as far as I know, there hasn't been any other environmental sampling out here since that point. But you can see that the footprint covers a lot of the parcel and we're going to be doing the soil characterization to characterize that soil. So there's going to be additional sampling conducted associated with that and then there will also be additional sampling conducted as part of the closure of the tanks. So those should identify any potential significant concerns out there.
I'm going to ask a practical question. Don't you need financing to build? You, yes, you're the developer.
Mr. Sheen, please identify yourself.
Sure. Victor Sheen, the development manager for 45 Harvard Street. So the way that the financing goes, the, so currently, the, the gas station is a participant of the 21J program, which is a state program that refunds or subsidizes a lot of the cleanup work. So the financing is in place to do the initial cleanup if necessary and if there are sort of gasoline-related contaminants, the removal cost will be reimbursed by the insurance program.
That's not what I'm asking.
But you're quite, I think.
You're, you're, you're going to get project financing, correct? You're not funding this out of your pocket or investment dollars, cash?
No, no, because it, being a 40B project, we are required to get.
Funding agencies, right.
Right, to deal with funding agencies. So they, they will.
So standard practice is, they will do an updated Phase One and if necessary, they will do a Phase Two. And that, and that event will take place in advance of soil removal? I assume you will have your cash in line, well in advance of digging into the ground?
The first phase of it, so that what likely is going to happen is there's going to be the construction lender for the construction components of it and there is the permanent lender, that's the subsidizing agency. And similar to 420 Harvard Street, our construction lender is a commercial bank like Salem Five Bank. And with commercially reasonable terms, they, they are going to make sure that the site is a clean site prior to any funding or, you know, closeout of, of the existing tanks and any, any related closeout procedures with the state that would have to be in place before they, before they, they close.
And this will precede excavation of the soil and that will be the more recent information, correct?
That's right. So you'll be, you will be the, literally the first part of any construction activity. It will be related to the site. We'll go in there, we'll do some additional Phase One, if not Phase Two categorization and as part of the tank removal process, as Lauren identified, everything is, it needs to be signed off by the state and there are very, very stringent guidelines that we have to follow in order to close out any tank, tank removal.
You did ask one of my questions, which was, has there been any research on the site done since 2000 or 2001? The answer is no.
That's my answer.
Okay. And a Phase One site assessment is essentially research, which I think we all know it was a gas station. So we really don't need to do a whole lot of research. It was a gas station, which in and of itself has a definition of storage of hazardous waste. Okay. So the only way to know whether there's contaminated soil is to get in there and start doing some borings and soil testing.
Right. So how can you predict that you're only going to have 940 yards of soil to be removed?
That's, that's for construction purposes if we do encounter.
Has nothing to do with removal of contaminated soil.
That's for construction purposes.
You've reduced the amount of soil you've removed for construction because you're no longer excavating a full below-grade parking area. Thank you. That makes much more sense. So in fact, hypothetically, if there's contaminated soil, there will be more trucks full of soil.
Yes.
Leaving this site or need to store soil on the site and encapsulate it with some sort of barrier. Wanted to make that one clear in my mind. Good question, Mark. The other question I have is, you made a statement that construction on these sites of this nature typically results in an improvement to the environmental contamination condition of the property. And I, I totally understand that. But do you know, is there a breakdown between where those cases have resulted in that as a result of complete excavation and elimination of contaminated soil as opposed to encapsulating? Because it sounds to me we're at, I mean, I'm using this in a broad term. We're now looking at a notion of encapsulating, not necessarily excavating and removing. You know, for example, the arsenic.
So I mean, these levels here don't require any encapsulation. They're safe or shouldn't, the levels that we know about from 2001. They, they were safe as is for current usage and all possible future uses, which includes residential. So they evaluated potential future use when they closed out these former releases and said that, all right, we looked at all these concentrations, where they're located, the concentrations in the water, and concentrations in the soil and how those might potentially, if they might potentially migrate into the indoor air. They should have looked at all those items when they closed these out initially and they've been closed for several years and haven't been audited by DEP. So from what I saw, the concentrations were extremely low that they identified for historic use as a gas station for as long as it has been. I was really surprised that they saw as little as they did.
And there was no AUL placed on the site in connection with that?
So I'm not talking about, when I said it's going to be below, that's just an additional measure that happens to be there. We don't need a barrier out here. They're really not concentrations of concern. You could have a residence out here with grass and it'd still be okay.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any other questions, comments, choose the members of the board wish to raise at this juncture?
I don't.
Not right now.
We're going to public comment next, so if you have something, now would be a good time to raise it, if you have something.
Oh, I think it's time for the public to speak.
Okay. We are now going to open up the hearing for a public comment. As I indicated at the outset of the hearing, we are asking that the public provide us with comments on the materials covered here tonight, which are the comments received by our environmental peer reviewer and from the developer's environmental consultant. There will be opportunities to provide comments on other aspects of the project at appropriate hearings. If you are going to speak tonight, I would ask that you come to the podium, that you speak loudly, clearly and slowly so that your comments will be captured and that you start by providing us with your name and your address. Does anyone want to come up and speak to us tonight? Come on up.
My name is Dr. Hildy Grossman. I am a resident of Thorndike Street. I also am the head of a nonprofit organization called Upstage Lung Cancer. So I have several questions. One is I was concerned about who's paying your, are you being paid by the town? Or are you being paid, you're as a consultant, who's paying your consultant fee?
I'm being paid by 445 Harvard, but I'm being paid by the town.
Okay, I just was wondering about you, yeah. So I was wondering, do standards change in 18 years?
Procedurally, if you can come through the board and we'll pass the question on.
Do standards change in 18 years?
And when you're talking about standards, what standards are you talking about?
The woman who spoke last was saying that there are very low amounts of whatever was assessed in the soil 18 years ago. I'm wondering if standards of what's low, what's high, whether those standards change in that timeframe.
Do you want to speak to whether or not the reportable concentrations for soil contamination have changed?
They do change occasionally. Sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down. I did compare these to the new, the new updated risk concentrations and they were still low in the updated levels.
Yeah, and I just also was concerned about the carcinogenic possibilities of disrupting all of this material into the air and sort of not just testing the soil, but I guess vapor testing or what else. I, I'm just concerned about that. I know there's a significant amount of lung cancer in our, in Brookline, so I'm concerned about that added to everything else, plus the added cars, all of that stuff. So is there kind of an assessment of the, of the air quality that's going to be done in addition to the soil?
Is that in relation to the soil removal? Is that what the question is?
Right, once you start disrupting all of this in building.
Dan, can I ask you to come up and answer that question, please?
Dan LaFrance again. The first thing that I would note is that the regulatory standards that we use for what we consider unrestricted residential use and the endpoints that Lauren has talked about generally are of the presumption that there will be windborne erosion, dust blowing across the site. People will be generally exposed and the Mass DEP sets the levels based on what they consider no significant risk, which in the context of carcinogenic risk is, you know, a one in a million cancer risk associated with the exposure to those levels of oil and hazardous materials. And so, and not just one in a million cancer risk, but one in a million cancer risk for a wide variety of chemicals at the same time. So any individual exposure to any individual chemical would likely result in even less of a particular nuisance risk. That being said, we did talk a little bit and the applicant, it sounds like, is on board with pre-characterizing in order to facilitate excavation and live loading into trucks and managing this material from the ground to the truck to off-site in a single pass as opposed to, you know, storing large stockpiles on the site and leaving them and performing testing. And very often, you pile material up on a site, you test it, you wait for the lab to come back, then you coordinate with the disposal facility. You're talking, you know, four to six weeks, sometimes longer, to go from emptying out of the ground to release the site. Doing this alternate approach of pre-characterization and then live loading and disposing would kind of limit the potential for any of those kind of incidental exposures to occur because that soil is coming out and going away in the same pass as opposed to a stockpile on the site that can blow around for any direct length of time.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on environmental issues?
Beth Kate, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine, 105 Center Street. I have a question that's kind of precipitated by the change in the amount of soil being removed. So we've gone from digging down 19 feet to digging down five feet. So does that mean that there's going to be an additional 14 feet of height on this building?
I don't believe that's what the testimony was. I think it's just that the amount of excavation has been reduced.
So then the parking garage isn't as far down, but you still have to have the clearance for the car? So I, I don't understand what's happening.
Yeah, so.
We don't know either.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and as we, as we stated at the outset, we are hopeful that the applicant at our subsequent hearing, which is September 25th, will be presenting updated plans.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Mark Rosen on Thorndike Street as well. And I have a couple of comments to make about tonight's meeting. Environmentally, I don't understand why the insidious blue dot that's indicated on that parcel, why this whole site cannot be totally cleaned up. Is it going to be that expensive for them to remove that nasty piece of environmental footwork in there? I think it would make the neighborhood a lot more comfortable to know that the entire site has been cleaned up and that the excavation is being limited because they don't want to go near that blue dot of a hot potato of environmental mess that's under there. That doesn't feel very comfortable at all to me and I imagine to any of the neighbors. I also want to point out that the neighborhood has come out universally, unanimously opposed to this project for a variety of reasons, have written letters, so. But overall, you know, but tonight we're talking about environmental stuff. I mean, not that it's way oversized for the area. This is a residential neighborhood and this is just too big for the neighborhood. The other concern I have is, was brought up about the issue of the environmental standards being changed. I know that the environmental standards tend to get more rigid as time goes on and surveys that were done 18, 19 years ago may no longer be valid and there may have been leaks or spills or accidents, as you so beautifully stated, that you're really not going to know until you do a soil survey. So I'm very happy to hear that that type of thing is being done. I do want to point out a couple of things. Does anybody know, and I'll wait for that answer after I'm done speaking, but on the property across the street that's being developed, gigantic property, huge blue thing, I'm sure if you drive by it, you can't miss it. It's pretty distinctive. And that's being kind. It's really ugly, actually. That it's built on, some part of it is built on a ledge and when they were doing construction, that ledge was vibrating the entire neighborhood. We have cracks in our walls from it from when they were doing construction work. And other neighbors have told me that their houses have been shaken to the core. So I'm just wondering if anyone has done an actual, kind of a geodetic analysis of what is under that site? If there's a ledge under there, if they know what the composition of the soil? Because I think that's very important, and I'll tell you why. Because over the last months since the adjacent site across the street has been developed, there's been consistent gas pipe leakage. You can smell gas in the area. EverSource Gas Company has been down, and so many times, and very closely to when Haverhill, all those houses blew up in the northern part of the state. So it just raised awareness about pressurization of gas and gas leaks and the safety of that. Well, of course, I'm at the end of the street and there's a gas company there and a police officer. And I said, "Tell me it's not gas." And he said, "Oh, yeah, it's gas." And I said, "What's going on?" And I talked to some of the workmen. They said, "You've got very old cast iron pipes and the construction that's going on is disturbing these pipes and it's causing the gas leakage." So I'm wondering how this fact is going to be factored in because I can tell you that just right above the graphic of that slide, right there where it says Thorndike Street, that's an area they've been digging in order to kind of mitigate this gas leakage problem. And because this is a residential neighborhood, we're all very concerned about our homes. And someone else very rightly mentioned the concerns about carcinogenic materials being dispersed in the air. We have elderly people on the streets, sick people on the street, children under the age of six, very close to this building site because it's a residential neighborhood. And I guess the last comment I'd like to make is I was speaking to the gentleman that have the gas station now and they currently have a lease, and they say that they have no plans to move. So as far as I understand, there's no actual control over the property for this site. So that, to my understanding, at least what these gentlemen are saying, and we're very friendly with them all, they're very nice people, they tell us that they're not leaving their lease, that they're going to be here for a while. So I'm wondering what the value is of these meetings if that property is not really in the control of the developer? Because my understanding of state law, this cannot go forward until that property is absolutely under the control of the developer. So I'd be interested in hearing your comments, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I do want to address a couple of things that came up. One of these is going to be a question for Polly. I know that this site control issue has been raised in respect to this project before. And Polly, if you have anything to add after I give what I think my understanding is, but it is not this board that makes a determination as to whether or not there's appropriate site control. Site control is determined by the state subsidizing agency. And it's my understanding that as part of the 40B application that is submitted to the state in the first instance, the state has to review, and I think it's Mass Housing or is it...
MHP.
MHP, Mass Housing Partnership, is the subsidizing agency here. So evidence of site control has to be furnished to the state subsidizing agency. And here it's Mass Housing Partnership. They've reviewed the documents that are supposed to evidence site control and they will not issue what's called a preliminary eligibility letter of PEL without sufficient evidence of site control. And so here, what we are faced with is a situation where, you know, as is appropriate for a board, we are relying on the state's assessment of the evidence that was presented to us and their issuance of a PEL as evidence that there is appropriate site control under the 40B statute and regulations. As far as the question that came up with respect to work that's being done on the gas line in Thorndike Street, Polly, do we have any information as to whether or not that is related to the work that's going on at 455?
This is the first I've heard about it, so I really, I really have no idea.
I have National Grid out in front of my house and they are working on gas lines in front of my house and they're also working on gas lines.
I just want to point out that that issue has been brought up in previous meetings.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The board is speaking now.
They're all over town, so I don't know what they're doing.
They're on Winchester Street, too. Yeah, they're everywhere.
They told me I had a gas leak in front of my house and they dug a big hole and went down there and then turned off our gas and came in and turned it back on again. But they're still in the middle of Hammond Street. They've been there for days. So there's something going on with National Grid and gas lines.
Right, but we don't know if that's necessarily related to any particular construction project ongoing in the town.
And I just want to add that I'm sure at the end of the process, Mass Housing Partnership will review all the documents and, you know, they're not going to be given the go-ahead if they don't have site control.
Is there, is there an interim step we can take to get Mass Housing Partnership to confirm that?
Well, the planning director, Allison Steinfeld, actually called them and they assured her that they felt they had site control.
Yeah, we have looked at this issue before. Did they, did they give us any details other than they have site control?
I don't have any details on that.
But that's not jurisdictionally, that's not us anyway.
I understand. It would help to understand why they think there's site control if other people don't.
Another question I wanted to ask of Mr. Sheen is, the question came up whether or not we know if there is ledge under this site. Do you know? Have you done enough subsurface investigation or geotech investigation to be able to determine whether there is ledge under the site? And if there is, what is your plan for dealing with it?
Sure. So over the years, there's been numerous sort of cleanup work and also they're currently actually monitoring wells that went down fairly deep in various parts of, I don't know if you can see it, but there are a number of sort of existing kind of monitoring wells at the locations around the site and around the tank areas. And they do go down fairly deep. And we have not encountered any ledge. And to the extent that the limited amount of construction-related soil removal, especially at the location that we are essentially at the perimeter of the site, we don't expect to encounter any refusal due to ledge. And I think part of what the gentleman had brought up earlier that the sort of construction-related impact to surrounding properties is, it's an enforcement issue, right? It's the building, if complaints were received by the building department, the building inspectors to go out there and make sure that the appropriate measures are in place before sort of continual construction activity was supposed to go on. You know, we have a similar project going on at 420 Harvest Street and given the sensitivity to the abutting properties that were older, we, you know, in sort of driving the piles down, which created a lot of vibration that 455 did, we actually elected to essentially drill the piles and in fact, to slow down construction in order to minimize any sort of vibration and impact to the abutting properties. And to the extent that we needed to underpin the butchery building, that's what we did as well. So I can't speak to the construction methods and means of 455 Harvest Street, but I can assure you that based on our experience at 420 Harvest and it is our intention that we're going to take the same care in doing the construction phase, especially doing the foundation limited excavation. But we do, we do make sure that abutting properties are protected. And we, to the extent that we actually do pre-construction surveys of abutting homes, so we document exactly if the walls are intact or, and then we do a post-construction evaluation and if there were any impact, you know, it's our responsibility to repair them back to, you know, it's pre-construction condition. So, and that's what, that's just what we do. I mean, that's part of the construction management plan that we have in place as part of the building permit.
Thank you. Ms. Kate, did you have a further comment?
Yes, it actually had to do with the site control issue. As a resident of this town, we rely on our town to do due diligence and to represent us. And I think that it behooves our town to ask for documentation regarding site control from the state and also to evaluate it and make sure that it is all correct and it's been represented correctly. Because if this project goes ahead, I believe that there's a time limitation from the point at which the ZBA issues a building permit and the time that they have to begin demolition and construction. And if there's a 10-year lease for Shimon's, that is not going to be possible. So I think that, you know, we as citizens rely on the town to really go to bat for us. And even if it means asking for all that documentation from the state and evaluating it independently, I would ask that this board do that. Thank you.
Lee Rosenbaum, Cool Street. I have a very specific environmental question about the blue dot. If you would please put that back up for the... I would like to know what the source of arsenic and other heavy metals that you mentioned is from that area and whether it's going to be an ongoing issue and what the source of that is. So it's a very specific question about that particular area.
Could you, could you please cut up to comment? Thank you.
First of all, that blue dot is not actually the sample location. It was just an item on the plan that I wanted to...
Could you, for the record, could you remind us of your name and...
Lauren Knetzni, Cooperstown Environmental.
Thank you.
And then the...
The blue dot, what is it, what's it from?
I'm not sure what this... Oh, the source of the contamination was the former oil-water separator that was removed. So there was one small area of soil beneath the oil-water separator that had higher levels of arsenic and lead. It was really contained and they did a bunch of other sampling around the tank and it was really that one single sample. But because of the depth and the concentration surrounding it, it did not need to be removed.
And I presume that the arsenic and the lead are attributable to leaded gasoline products that were commonly in use in service stations prior to the mid-'70s?
I would assume the lead, I mean, there could have been some waste oil that got in there with, for the arsenic. I'm really not sure what ended up in the oil-water separator.
There's no continual source.
Right, there's no continual source. That oil-water separator was removed at that time. That sample was collected when they removed the oil-water separator.
Are there any other oil-water separators, floor drains, or any other means by which the service station and its current operations could be discharging materials to the subsurface at this point?
We can, we can find out. We can find out from the ownership. I don't, we don't have that information at this point.
And I did want to just clarify that I said that that was a higher concentration. It's just what kind of tripped them into the system because it was slightly elevated. It was still a condition of no significant risk. It wasn't like, it was like this really alarming high concentration. It was just one that would have to be managed, especially if it's sent off-site. It's not a risk being left there.
So I think there was a question that came up earlier about why that, whatever is represented... Please stay up here. Why whatever was represented by that blue dot could be fully cleaned up? Can you respond to that, please?
I suppose it could be. It's not required to be based on the regulations. I'm not sure. I wasn't involved in 2001 when they closed it out. So I really don't know why they didn't go back other than it was safe as it was. So they didn't feel like it was necessary and it wasn't necessary or required by regulations. It was no significant risk, so it wasn't going to hurt anyone.
I'm sorry, did you keep it for a second?
Yep, it wasn't going to hurt anyone.
It's not moving.
Mm-hmm, and it's not moving.
Right.
Thanks.
Let me just quickly add. So I think the, in terms of the blue dot, I think it was left on it as a, as a sort of binding to the architect. So it's not reflective in terms of the actual location of that, the contaminated, that's 18 feet down on the ground. But to that, also to the extent that the location is somewhere under the parking area, it's not under the proposed retail area. So it's, it's, it's not, it's not a source of concern. It's not going to be in contact with any inhabitants on the side besides cars that are parking over that area.
Ma'am?
My name is Ludmila Pushak, 70 Coolidge Street. Ludmila? L-U-D-M-I-L-A. Pushak, P-U-S-H-A-K. We lived in this house from 1986. We bought this house with three children who grow there. The house is very, very old. We're very close to this construction. Construction is extremely big, a lot of vibration. Houses is old. We're all in danger. Our houses will be destroyed by this construction. My husband had a stroke. Here, we have a very small piece of land behind of the house. I don't know how many feet, maybe 10. We grow tomato, cucumbers on this small piece of land, what make us happy, okay? If this big construction will be start working, our houses will be destroyed because it's too big for this place, too big construction. Vibration, our houses is old, garages is old, everything is old. We are very small community. We're asking the city to protect our home. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sloane Shaw. I live on Thorndike Street. And I had a question about where the dirt is being excavated to. Is there a special toxic waste site that all the dirt is being removed to? It sounded like it was just being removed, but I want to know if it's followed regulations for where contaminated earth goes.
I'm going to ask the applicant's LSP to field that question, please.
So we're going to sample the soil ahead of time, like I said, and it's going to depend on what the concentrations in the soil that's going off-site end up being. So based on those results, we'll determine where, what facilities will accept it. And there's certain regulatory paperwork, depending on how high the concentrations are, about where it could go. We're kind of expecting a lot of it to be below those concentrations, but there's several different facilities in Massachusetts and out of state and it depends on what the concentrations end up being, where it can go.
So in other words, when you are excavating the soil, you're going to test it? You're going to figure out where it can go as a regulatory matter? And trucks will take various loads of soil depending on what's in it to different landfills?
Yeah, I mean, it could all end up being acceptable at the same place. It could all be lower concentrations. We don't know yet until we get the test results back.
Thank you.
Hi, Colleen Burns, Bone Break, 50 Thorndike Street. My husband's over there, Patrick Bone Break. Bonebreak. So I have just a few comments for food for thought, and then some questions, which would be around the idea that there's three gas stations, actually, that are around the area. So we have the one that's on our side of the street, a 50 Thorndike, we have the former gas station that is now the building that's being developed, and then Shimon's, which is now proposed. So that is our concern right now, is that we're looking at, I'm, I'm trying to remember, I was typing as fast as I could, I'm a clinician, I have a business at 1093 Beacon Street, so we live on 50 Thorndike Street, but I also have a business, and we have two children, and a wonderful neighborhood, but both of our abutting houses are also being under construction right now, so one is a six-apartment unit, and then one is a single-family, and then we have the three gas stations. So you're speaking to, and I apologize, I don't mean to direct my attention over here, I'm trying to be over here, but we looked at some data about airborne, the reducing of toxic loads, the testing, the samples, we're also looking at the quote of, "It was not going to hurt people." I would really like some data about what that statistically and empirically means, how do you not hurt people? So is that a study, are those statistics, is that a longitudinal study, is that something we can actually look at for our children and ourselves? Also, they talk about the maximum concentration of nine feet, again, empirically, do we have data to support this? And then I think somebody echoed my comment here about the groundwater being 18 feet now, but yet, where is that done? That was done many, many moons ago, so how do we know? I know for sure on Thorndike Street, our neighbors have had to replace their pipes, our pipes are now being rattled, and we have a lot of sediment, specifically our new bathrooms are being tarnished with soil and debris and yellow and brown, and we're being told by the town of Brooklyn that that's our responsibility, but yet, three people on our street have had to replace their pipes. So I think this echoes, again, to repeat myself, this community that everything's being shaken, everything's being rumbled, and I'd like to know where all these studies are coming from. The last two points would be that the contamination stays 15 feet, but that was a study done in 2001. We're quite a bit far away from 2001, so we would like to protect our children, we have two children, our street has children, our community has children, our children go down the street to the Coolidge Corner School, now, the name, Coolidge Corner School. And then just the last point is that there's no significant study for risk of cancer, again, and no risk of significant migration. So I would just like to know if we could possibly, as a community, get some support with some studies or something that could help us understand if this was factual, or when the studies were done, and, you know, how do we, how do we obtain that information?
So I'm going to ask in just a second, Dan LaFrance, the town's peer reviewer, to explain some of this, but sort of very high level, environmental cleanup issues, environmental contamination issues in Massachusetts are handled under what's called the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, the MCP, it's a set of regulations. The MCP sets certain standards for compounds in soil and in groundwater, and when I say compounds, I mean like contaminants. And so if, when soil or groundwater is tested, there are certain numerical limits for various compounds, and if you are above, if you come up with a soil test or a groundwater test that shows a concentration of that contaminant that's above that concentration, then it's flagged, and it needs to be addressed in some way. If it's below that, then the state has made a determination that it doesn't require cleanup. There's also a whole cleanup process that is established in the MCP, and also under 2020, which is the statute that goes along with it. And basically, what it says is that there are certain cleanup standards, again, depending on what the contamination is, where it is, et cetera, so that determination of no significant risk is something that's in the regulations, and there's a whole assessment process that a licensed site professional who's working on a contaminated site has to undergo in order to determine whether or not there is a condition of no significant risk, so there are benchmarks that the state establishes. So it's not so much a study, as there are certain sort of numeric goals and procedures that are outlined in the statute and the regulations, and when a contamination has been detected at a property, in order for that site to be closed out by the state, they have to go through all of these procedures, and there has to be a determination that there is no significant risk. In terms of migration, things that are in soil, and things that were in soil like 20 years ago, they're not going anywhere, right? So if you think about, like, if you, if one of your kids spills something in the dirt behind your house, it's just sitting there in the dirt, so it's not moving. So things that were in the dirt 20 years ago, if they were either closed, left in place, or carted off, they're not there anymore. We did ask the question about what happens, you know, to things that have been deposited anew over the last 20 years, and it sounds like the applicant and its team is well aware of the fact that they do need to do additional assessment and deal with anything that has been deposited on the site over the last 20 years. Dan, do you want to add anything to that? That was sort of the layperson's version of, of the system.
That didn't sound like a layperson's version, for the record, that was excellently stated. I, I do want to add a couple of things, the, the first of which gets back to some of the comments that have come up about the nefarious blue dot, and why can't we clean up everything, and the use of the word significant that we, as LSPs like to toss around. What a lot of people don't know is that, you know, just soil in general has low levels of arsenic in it, and depending on where you are, sometimes higher levels, there are portions of Worcester County that are actually at levels that the state toxicologists would otherwise consider an imminent hazard, except that they're naturally occurring as a result of geological processes. And so arsenic is a carcinogen, and just by virtue of exposure to the existence of soil, everyone is in some way dosed with arsenic on a daily basis. It's an uncomfortable thing for a lot of people to hear, and, you know, I apologize if I scared anybody in the room by saying that, but that is where the, the whole prospect of what is a significant risk derives from, is that you cannot eliminate exposure 100% down to nothing. If you, if you are breathing the air in an urban setting, there is something in the air that, you know, at a high enough dosage could kill you, and so, you know, at what point is that a significant health hazard, and that's where the state establishes the no significant risk is, you know, for carcinogens, a one in a million cancer risk. To some of the questions that have come up as far as, you know, risks to some of the off-site properties from, you know, things like exposure to contaminants from the soil, one thing that we may suggest, and that I've had to do on other sites where, particularly where lead is a concern and there are residential properties nearby, is at least at the outset of construction, some perimeter air monitoring for dust, and you can establish a dust action level that sort of, that calculates to the lead levels that are in the dust that would be generated from the site. If you have dust migrating from the site in your fence line samples, you enact additional engineering controls, you wet the soil down more, you cover your piles better, et cetera, and, you know, creating an action level or something like that as part of the process would be a way to manage some of those kind of potential concerns with some of the surrounding properties, so, you know, I offer that for the applicant's consideration as a possible step to take. I feel like there were several other comments that it started spinning my wheels and I forgot my train of thought, so if there are other things that you'd like me to speak to specifically?
I think that's, I think that's good, thank you. Ma'am, did you have any follow-on questions based on the responses that you got? Ma'am?
I'm sorry, sorry. No, let me answer my questions, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rosen?
Yes, I, I just wanted to make a comment about the thought that...
Could you just provide, I'm sorry, your name and address?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm, I'm Mr. Rosen over on Thorndike Street, and I wanted to make a comment about the, the concept, the ideal concept, that earth never moves, that once you cover it over, it's stable, and it doesn't move, and so, and in generally, I'd have to say, yeah, you're absolutely right, I mean, that's how we have cities and towns, you know, the earth is stable, but in some rare cases, the earth does move, there is motion, there's migration. You don't have to look very far from this proposed site, or from the ongoing construction site across the street, to see an example of that. A very large sinkhole opened up at the corner of Harvard Street and Thorndike Street over the last few months, and it's, you can, you can go by it, it's first, it was patched over with a steel plate, and then it's been kind of patched in, but it's an indication that, yes, soil does migrate, there is migration underneath the surface, and so I think what the concerns are for people is that, you know, while there is some stability at the outset, if there are any possible contaminants in the site, that they all should be removed in the event that there is a soil migration in the future due to some unforeseen event, that you wouldn't be having toxic waste migrating to off-site, to other people's properties, or in, in some place where it could harm the general public. That was the only comment I wanted to make, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to comment on environmental matters relating to this project tonight? Great, thank you all very much for coming in and for providing us with your feedback on this, it really matters to the board. Do we, does the board have any other matters we want to take up this evening?
No, you should ask Polly whether they're administrative.
Polly, any administrative business?
No, other than announcing the continuation date, there are none.
Okay. As stated at the outset, this meeting will be, this hearing will be continued to September 25th at 7:00 PM, same location, thank you.